Hey, here Kimball.
Here.
Paulin.
Here.
New master. Wilson.
Here.
All right, before we move into our agenda, Mr. Wall would like to introduce an important new staff member in the district.
Yes, Tom Wazork, please come on up. I'd like to introduce our director of finance, Tom Wazork. Tom comes to us with thirty-plus years of school finance experience. He knows Minnesota school finance really well and is able to identify, looking at our budget and bill, identify where everything fits in beautifully. So, a great resource for us in White Bear Lake. Tom has, coming to us from intermediate district two eighty-eight. Before that, he was in Bemidji, Foley, Purim, Alexandria, two eighty-eight, and then he decided he needed to be back in a city that had a lake. So, he came back to White Bear Lake. So, welcome, Tom. We're glad to have you on our team.
Thank you.
Welcome, Tom, and I know our clerk, she'll find it somewhere, but you guys have difficult names to spell, starting with Dr. Kaczynski. We'll have to work on your last name, so.
It's not as bad as it looks.
Okay.
We're gonna make a Mr. W. video here next.
Well, thank you for my, I'm glad to be here, and it's been a very fast two weeks. So, I'm excited.
I told Tom, I met him a few minutes ago, we have big shoes to fill with Mary Vasquez retiring, but we've heard great things about you. We look forward to having you working here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll turn to our first official discussion item, B1, designing for student success. Dr. Kazmierczak.
Sarah Paul, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, is here with the team. Getting them organized, so, turn it over to them. Welcome, everybody.
All right, well, thank you for the opportunity to share with you about how we have been very intentional about designing our system for student success. I am fortunate to have a team here because it's really important for you to understand, really, the purpose of why we made the decisions we did, and then to hear just from people that all of this was designed to support, which is our building administrators and our teachers. I shared several slides with you in the beginning because, as you read in advance, I wanted you to have the context as to what the purpose was for really what the heart of our presentation is about. Thank you so much for those of you that were able to attend the new educator induction last week and then to be at convocation today. I think you'll see a theme that we really want to keep revisiting is really the importance of really why and the purpose behind what we do. And clearly, in our work, we've been a mission-driven organization, and we really, as you look at our mission statement, I really embold here put the importance of nurturing the unique talents and abilities of every student, and that has been the heart of a lot of these design decisions that we've been making through the course of the year. Keep in, you know, keep in the back of your heads some key words in terms of what we've talked about with the world's best workforce, with implementing our strategic plan, with alignment, and bottom line, adjusting instruction to meet student needs. Those are the things that I'm hoping that you're gonna hear throughout all of our voices as we have a chance to talk with you today. Research points too, and one of the most important factors that we know impacts student learning is the quality of teachers and the instructional, the quality of instruction that they're giving. And a lot of our conversations stemmed back when we did our culture survey. And when you look at the things that really make a difference in improving instruction, it comes down to making sure that there's time to collaborate. And our teachers shared that it's very important and valuable to them that we design around having time to collaborate with their colleagues so that they can share in the learning, share in the insights, and actually work together to become better. And the other important thing was the frequency of feedback. How are we making sure that there's feedback across with our educators, feedback to students, so that people can own their craft of teaching, own their learning as a student in the classroom so that we can be improving us all across our system? We talked a lot in our design process about how we've shifted a paradigm from knowledge is power to the sharing of knowledge is power. And really, an important part of a lot of the conversations that we had as we put the improvements together. And so, there's several improvements that I'm shared with you in terms of what we did over the course of the last year to really be thoughtful and intentional about the things that we were gonna do differently this year so that we can continually improve on what we've been doing in the past. We've got a lot of success to build from, but we're always conscious of looking for our blind spots and gaps and areas that we can improve to be better. And it's all really around the premise of collective impact. At the heart and the core of our work is delivering on helping every individual learner develop their needs and interests and addressing some of these critical areas of need that we had identified through the various feedback loops that we had. So, we're gonna focus on two things tonight. We're gonna focus on two of the things that we have been doing to very intentionally move forward and improve this year. We have, half of the presenters here are here to talk about our data retreat, and so we're gonna start with Brian Morris, and he's gonna share a high level, kind of what the whole purpose of it was, what was the why behind the work, and then with some principal and teacher perspective. And then, we're gonna shift and talk about this whole idea of collaborative inquiry teams and the training, and then those days that we're so thankful that you approved in our calendar, what's gonna be the focus and the energy behind that work. Somebody hand it off to Brian.
Great, thank you. So, the data retreat, this is our third year having a data retreat, and it really, it provides that, it's in August, the transition from looking back to looking forward, right? It's a collaborative teams, we come together as a large group of building teams, and then building teams split off, looking at data for the past year and actually the previous year, and use it to build their action plans, right? How does this team come together, looking at what has happened in the past, where they wanna be in the future, how are they gonna move our students in the growth and the direction that they would like them to move? They create their action plans aligned with the world's best workforce, and again, they're looking at metrics, not just the traditional academic proficiency metrics, but academic proficiency, growth, school climate, post-secondary readiness, and instructional practice. And again, getting back to that idea of the feedback loop, throughout the year, we're, principals are gonna be monitoring leading indicators of student success. So, how is attendance been affected by their action plan? How are behavior or different achievement measures been affected by their action plan? To sort of speak to some of the work that went on at the data retreat, Tim Shachemeyer and Mandira Randall from Central Middle School and Caitlin Held from North Campus, speak a little bit to their experience at the data retreat.
All right, can I start? All right. Madam Chair, Board, thanks for having us here tonight. Mr. Morris talked a little bit about the alignment of the data teams to the world's best workforce. So, the metrics that we were working around were, and some of them were applicable to all levels or to different levels of schools. So, we're looking at kindergarten readiness, third grade reading, closing racial and economic achievement gaps, career and college readiness, and graduation from high school. At Central Middle School, when we received our vision cards and our data collectively from Mr. Morris, closing the racial and economic achievement gap is something that really resonated with the team of eight teachers, administrators that we had with Central. And we began a pretty, a pretty rich dialogue about not necessarily achievement gaps, but opportunity gaps that we were seeing in our schools. And for those of you that were with us at convocation today, it kind of led into a little bit of the theme with Jamie Elmason. And so, I'm actually gonna turn it over to Mandira here to talk about how that conversation grew at Central.
Sure. Hello, thank you very much for having me here. My background's in science, so the biggest part that I would like to focus on that we really found value in was the process, really getting in to, you know, with data, there's so much to sift through and whatnot, and having a specific process that we were led through at the data retreat was really beneficial to give us a framework to guide and focus our collabora, our collaboration in order to use our time most wisely. Also, what was really helpful with it was, as Jamie had mentioned this afternoon, it was able for us to focus in and identify where our own implicit biases had lied that I, I'm not sure if we would see otherwise. So, the process that we went through, we started with predicting, where we went through and we made some predictions on what do we think we are gonna see in these data sets. Then, we were given the visualize card, go visualize. We were given an opportunity then to just make observations, so just looking at the facts, what do we see, what is just, what are the numbers saying, what are we seeing black and white? And then, finally, we went into our inferences and our questions, and I really believe there was a power in separating, then making that distinction of making observations and then making inferences. Again, with my science background, I kinda geeked out about that. To give you a little bit of a specific example where this really helped, we focused on our attendance and where we were seeing a decline there, and thinking at first, prior to our observation, kinda again going to those implicit biases, our kind of gut reaction was, well, there were a lot of students that were missing for vacations, so maybe vacations is the cause that drive behind why our attendance had dropped. Versus after going through the process, when we got to the observation stage and then broke it apart and got into the inferences, our reality check was, maybe our students are disengaged. So, that led back into then, setting up for our action plan of, okay, now that we think that there is a place that we can start of disengaged students, now how are we gonna increase that?
So, ultimately, we had a three-point plan at Central, engagement of parents, engagement of students, and teaching strategies. And I'm not gonna go into every single detail, but it was, it was nice because then our team broke out and developed each one of those strategy points. Moreover, not connected to the data retreat, but the previous week, there was a whole team from White Bear Lake at the Avid National Institute, and so, we took some of the strategies and things we learned there and applied it to the teaching strategies point for Central Middle School. And now, the, come full circle, well, maybe half circle, is, you know, right in this room this morning, we presented some of that data to, and the plan to the Central team. And so, now, like Brian said, we're gonna be looking for leading indicators on our attendance to see if the things that we're doing to engage our students' parents and teaching strategies are making a difference. Kind of a fun deal. Any questions about Central specifically? Otherwise, I'm going to pass over North Campus here. Yes, Mr. Kimball.
Just going back to you, your observation stage, and you had the like theory or hypothesis or something that vacations might be. So, you studied absentees, and you didn't find vacations had a significant percentage of the absence.
Yep, so, some of the, some of the pieces, we talked about some anecdotal data as well, like what are, what are the conversations we're having with, with families? How many of those, how many of those vacation slips am I seeing as a principal? And is it, is it, are there enough of those to have a significant impact on our attendance? And the answer really is no. I mean, like Mandira was maybe saying, is that's, that's an easy, that's maybe an easier way not, it doesn't go to the heart of maybe what the real issue may be, which is a hard truth to sometimes realize when you're the one in the work.
You can't really, you don't have a slip or disengagement, right? Like you do for vacation, but, so people just not coming to school without a reason.
Yep, so maybe for whatever reason. So, I am gonna, I'm gonna slip into one strategy we're gonna do. We're gonna ask our students. We're gonna have a student engagement survey that's gonna go out to our students right at the beginning of the year. We have to do one for Promise Fellows, so we're gonna marry those two together. We're gonna ask students, what, you know, what do you, what do you think about school? They're the customers, right? So, it's important to ask. Thank you.
All right, well, I'll talk a little bit about the North Campus perspective. I'm a language arts teacher in the literacy specialist at North Campus, so for me, it's really impactful to be able to look at a lot of the data that surrounds our MCA and MAP reading growth, as well as our class observation scores, so what is being observed of teachers in the classroom. And again, for me, that process of being able to make clear observations first and then have some hypotheses surrounding those was really impactful, because when you start to kind of look at the different metrics and areas that are either being tested or observed, it's interesting to start to see correlations between certain areas. So, for example, one of the things that we're working toward for the world's best workforce is the college and career readiness. So, especially at the high school level, that's a really huge goal of ours. So, when we're looking at things like what is being observed of teachers in the classroom, one thing that we noted was that in many of the classrooms in North Campus, an area of growth is analysis and inquiry being observed in the classroom. But, on the other hand, when we're looking at some of our data surrounding student achievement in the areas of credit or credit recovery, the numbers are really, really high and doing well. So, it's able to help us to kind of gauge our focus on, so students are earning credit at the high school level, but is there an appropriate amount of rigor in the classroom, and what does that look like, and are we really preparing them for whatever comes next? So, at least for me, especially in the areas of reading and literacy, being able to look at, you know, how are we actually looking at reading and literacy in the classroom, and is there enough analysis surrounding the literature that we read? Is there enough inquiry surrounding students questioning what they're reading and actually getting involved in it? And how does that also then affect things like our MCA reading growth and MAP growth? So, at least from my perspective, it was really valuable to be able to see how some of those things that maybe seem unrelated at first tend to kind of go hand in hand, we're able to make some really focused judgments about what maybe needs to be done practically. So, one outcome for us was that we were able to plan exactly how we were going to involve invested parties in our school, in staff development and PD, to be able to actually address some of those areas. So, we ended up creating, building goals surrounding reading, writing, and critical thinking, and how those three go together, which sounds pretty basic for the high school level, but at the same time, when you're looking at some of that data, it's really important to remember to go back to some of those basics and make sure that, you know, you're not just handing out a really difficult college-level textbook, you're teaching students how to read that and how to access that. So, so that's a little bit from our perspective. Do you guys have any questions about North Campus at all?
If they may, after they hear whoever else is.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
I'm just, you know, I think back, and first of all, great work, right? I really appreciate all of it. We talk about, or when I talk about, you know, career and college readiness, right? I talk about it not just starting in North Campus or in high school, I talk about going back to starting in middle school, and in some cases, we should be working that thing in elementary school, right? Because the one thing that we know that every student in this whole district, at one point in their life, is gonna have to pick a career, right? So, is this kind of geared into that same direction of the same thing that you've kind of been gearing things around? Like, I talk, I think about the, the career pathway stuff we did this summer with construction, with healthcare, is that kind of gearing into the same thing? Are we collecting data for all of this stuff to go back? Is that fitting right into that spot?
I think under that umbrella, it's absolutely about that, how we put all of these parts together to connect to what college and career readiness is and how we actually engage students and families in that conversation earlier. I have to take advantage of this opportunity to maybe connect some thinking around, part of that is the importance of transitions, and we've been doing a lot of thinking around transitions, and that has come up a lot in the conversations at the data retreat. And so, I'm just gonna say, stay tuned for how we may be bringing some ideas to you in terms of how we're gonna be intentional about transition times and learning from what's successful at some parts of the system and how that may relate to what we bring forward down the road. I'm, you know, there's a lot more conversation to be had, but there were some pretty compelling conversations that happened that we're gonna dig into a little bit more to see what improvements are in store for eighteen nineteen. But it is in line with transitions, and when we look at, at a system from going from fifth to sixth, or sixth to eighth, or in our system, ten to eleven, there has to be that connection that is the tie that binds, which is college and career readiness. And so, that is all part of that bigger conversation.
If I may, I do have an example I can also provide. I was fortunate enough to also be at the data retreat on Sunrise's team last year, and part of the conversation that we brought up revolved around reading. And when you think the 21st century learning skills, your four Cs, getting into that critical thinking piece, and thinking, you know, whether they're going to college or going into a career that those are those life skills that students need and that we can play to at any grade level. So, specifically then, both last year and actually, reading also came up on our Central's team as well, part of the strategies that we had talked about and bringing in avid Wicker strategies as well to help with those life skills and developing that. So, last year and this year, they, we then molded those into our goals, our school year goals, which have, like, last year was Sunrise, the reading goal, that kind of shaped that framework that we were able to see down the line, which then was helpful to see the second year in the data retreat as well.
Well, then, the day after the data retreat, we had teacher leaders, this was elementary, elementary teacher leaders and principals in. And as Sarah pointed out, we're so grateful that they, we get the half-days, the collaborative inquiry team days, and we wanted to make sure we made the best use of those days, and we wanted to make sure there was some leadership with leaders who were trained to lead more discussion, go deeper with the data that they had talked about the previous day, with the whole idea being we want to move from data to results, those results being increased student achievement. So, and in between data and results, we needed some leadership, we also need the teaching strategies. So, Tim already referenced, you know, working in that direction. So, in that day, we did such things as helping them anticipate challenges they may encounter, like do a current state of their team. Go from, we had a document from a dysfunctional team over to a trusting team, things you could look at along those lines. We talked about highly functioning teams. They have norms, things like, when you say something, I will paraphrase, I will, when you say something, I will presume positive intentions in what you've said. I mean, we went through various things like that. We went through agreements. Agreements are, you'll come on time, you will listen to the people here, you will maintain the confidentiality of, because we want the team together, really talking about student data, and so confidentiality, obviously, that can't go everywhere. And we helped them anticipate challenges they may come upon. We actually gave them a book, it's called Lemons to Lemonade, and it is resolving problems in meetings, workshops, and PLCs. PLCs is, we've kind of called that, called our teams that before, now we're calling them collaborative inquiry teams, because we're focusing that collaborative word. But it's very similar to a PLC, so the book can, it talks about non-participants, interruptors, subject changers, and so it'll give them some practical, you know, if I'm trying to lead my group and we're falling apart because of, they can refer to the book. We also provided them with some sample forms, they could use a sample, if they wanted to use forms they've used in the past, that's fine, but we gave them some samples if they felt the need to streamline what they've been doing. So, we had a planning form for their CIT, we had an agenda form, things like that. We talked about the dates, we've got the dates on the calendar, and then they're expected to meet weekly in between those big times. And then, what kind of support, and we're going to make sure that we have frequent, ongoing support for the principals and the teacher team leaders. And then, we fully expect and told them that they aren't a team leader for life, they, it will be distributed leadership, but we needed to get it off the ground, so we wanted to train this initial cohort. And then, at the end of the training, we asked them for input, and some of the comments were, they loved the language to work with the challenges they may encounter, they loved the leadership skills development, they liked the part about agreements and norms, they liked the five dysfunctions of a team and how we could move them to a trusting team. So, they liked the practical examples, which now I will stop talking and pass it over to, you can hear from Cynthia and Lee about how they're actually putting it into place at Otter.
Yep. Madam Chair, Board, thanks for having us. So, when I think about the collaborative inquiry training that we were able to have, it was a really great place to start a conversation about how we achieve functional teams in our schools. So, just like Sarah had said, you know, the most critical factor in the school every day is the teacher, and what does the teacher need? They need really great supports. Who better to support them than their own team? We've gotta get those teams functioning at a very high level. So, at the training, it started a lot of conversations about, and really made it a safe place to go, you know what, this is normal, some of the things we've been experiencing in our team, but now we see the potential of where we'd like to go. So, going into that training, really wanting to, so when I thought about my team that I was bringing to that training, I was really thinking about how we distribute that leadership, that they should be able to have leaders within their team supporting them. So, had one representative of each grade level, a special education teacher, a world languages teacher, intervention teacher, making sure that they're all there, because they're leading teams as well. At the training, we started with the kind of a state of our school, and what kind of culture do we have within our school? And lo and behold, found that there were some, some areas to continue to work on, for example, building trust. I think what this training really did and helped us is understanding that working in teams can be very challenging, and it's very rewarding, but we need to have things in place to make us successful. We need to be supported in being successful. It's not just a given that you put a team of teachers together and they're gonna successfully work together, teachers, whatever career it is. So, being very thoughtful about that. So, moving forward, our plans really for implementing this is, so, we started the next week, our leadership team came back together. We did the norms and agreements together as a group, exactly as we had learned there, we did it together as our leadership team, they're gonna bring it out to their grade level teams, their CIT teams, and start to work on that. We have a system in place that our leadership team meets, we're gonna practice some of these things that we're learning, they're gonna go the next week and meet in their CI team and do those same things, and then we have a week to come back to the leadership, so that we're constantly building that leadership capacity to be a highly functioning team. So, Lee?
So, we're just in the beginning stages of getting this going, but first, I want to thank all of you that we have this time, because as I'm thinking back, when we started PLCs, as they were called last year, and we were working through that process last year, we realized we did not know enough of how to make this productive, so that we have, now, this year, we have that deeper training, we feel much more ready to get everything going in the right direction, so that's a real positive. But I, just what Cynthia said is, the way that we have it set up is, we will practice it with our leadership team, and then I'll feel much more ready to go back to my grade level team and do the same thing there, just like we would do with our students. We practice it one place, try it again in another place. So, I think the model really lends itself to making a big step forward with a process.
Do you have any questions?
You know, in the slide, it says that the, the teams will meet regularly, is that, are they gonna meet weekly? What, I just need to know what that by regularly.
The four big times built into the calendar, where it's a half-day, and that's where they'll go closer to a data retreat, where they, you know, look at the data and infer, predict, or predict and then infer. But then, in between those four times, it is expected weekly, and we realize if it's a three-day week, they probably won't. So, I can't say weekly, hard fast, but that is the recommendation.
Okay, I know that, you know, in previous years, there were some creative things done in elementary to allow that collaboration time, but so, if that happened, had we actually set time into the, for them to meet?
So, elementary, it's part of our design that we've worked in, that time to collaborate, and then the extended time was the creativity to extend that beyond the hour of time so that they could lengthen their time with their team. We are very mindful of how secondary calendars are different, you know, and the way that we have our start and end times are different, and so, we really work with making sure that when we design things, that we're working and being very thoughtful about the design elements.
elements in place for secondary that are maybe different from elementary. And that's where collaborative inquiry is something we're rolling out across the whole system, but you'll see a different pace to which this year looks in elementary, because we're ahead than secondary, because we need to make sure that, you know, when we go back to our emphasis on the why and what the value is for you, so that this team time is relevant and meaningful and a value add, we've got some laying of the foundation to do in secondary, and so we don't just retrofit and say everybody's doing a one-size-fits-all approach.
And just as an aside, we met with Kathleen last week and talked about, we will do some leadership training for the groups of people like nurses, school psychs, speech language, those kind of teams that are kind of the specialist groups. So we're going to, it was grade level primarily, intervention and some, but we're going to make sure we get other people, so they can get training that's specific to being a nurse in a school and that kind of thing.
First off, I have to comment, and I appreciate the effort, the work that's being done here. I can't imagine doing a job that you do each and every day without having that time built in and that collaboration. Any job, you know, even where I work, which is Fairview, and we've gotten into all kinds of stuff with our merger there at Health East, but I can't imagine, you know, even my job, doing what I do without working in a team environment, a collaborative environment, and you're dealing with these young minds, developing minds, that are so impressionable each and every day. I think it's fantastic, and the more we can do this, the better I think we're going to be as a district. Question I have is, there was mention in the slide about the taking away structures that inhibited subs, however that was worded, and I was curious, yeah, that we're causing shortage of substitutes, what exactly did you mean by that, or what was going on there?
So previously, we had data days in elementary where teams would get together and they would take the time to look at the data and do some planning together, so that they could, you know, learn, you know, do that shared collaborative time, but we would do subs and they would take a half a day, you know, in order to do that. Now, when we have to set aside time, the teacher is staying in front of the classroom with the kids, and so we don't have a model built upon substitutes coming in to show the value for collaborative time. We've set that time aside in the calendar, so that we're just showing by design, teacher in front of the classroom is the best design that we can have. So it's delivering on the value of collaboration in a way that makes the most sense to instruction for students.
So just to make sure I've got it clear in my head, what you've done with this design is dedicate the professional development time for the year to this endeavor, rather than a mix of other things.
We prioritize, yes, and we've made sure that we create a design as a system, and then while making sure that we have the autonomy at the building level, to make sure they're taking into account the needs of their staff and their students in terms of developing their action plans.
But there still is some professional development time in the calendar, this isn't the entire... I'm just thinking of all the things that were underway with all the schools and the stress that people have, you know, trying to do all of the initiatives, and as we look at our new strategic planning, this looks like it will work in well, but, you know, they're all big, big concepts and big endeavors. So most of our professional development is, you would say most of it is giving people time to collaborate and work with this year's pushes.
Our academic priorities this year were improving instruction, which had a lot around this core design, closing achievement and opportunity gaps, and then making sure that we were expanding opportunities for college and career readiness. And so that is reflected in our action plans, and principals were, you know, were told, please do not create more than three action plans. We don't need buildings to have eight action plans, which is freeing to principals to say, I can go deep in areas that I feel like are going to make a difference, and not coming up with, you know, lots of strategies that then are really hard to execute and implement. So this process mirrored what we said our academic priorities were in July.
I'm just wondering, you know, are there specific goals being, you know, measured and set with each of these buildings, or, I mean, rather than, or is some of it just a new, kind of a training and a new way of looking at things and analyzing things, or, you know, and then maybe next year, we're going to measure, like attendance? So are we having a baseline, and then using this to then, a year from now or two years from now, we can say, these strategies based on the analysis of data have resulted in these positive gains? Are we doing, how specific or?
It's both and, we believe that the process is what's going to accelerate us to our outcomes, and we will absolutely be measuring outcomes, and when Brian referenced the leading indicators, we're going to be tracking what we know are leading indicators to the outcomes we're after for the year.
Main ones, I mean, not everything gets back to the board, but it's interesting then to know, and sometimes it doesn't result in what you wanted, right? But that's good to know, too.
Yes. Probably two points to that, sometimes the outcomes we're after don't happen in a first year of implementation, but we're still, we stay with something, because we believe that when we commit to it and do it with fidelity, we're going to get to those outcomes. So we may not see it in a year, and sometimes we can do things with the best of intentions and they don't work, and we have to own that and say, time to try something different. And so we're trying to build that culture as a learning organization, I think you've heard many times from multiple presentations, that that's why trust is so important in this, so that we can, there's so much great thinking in our, in our organization, that we've got people that, we had so much input and thought that went into these goals, because there's so much great thinking here, that to create the conditions for that, to continue to be the way that we try new things, make sure that we're implementing with fidelity, try something new, is just part of our design.
Well, thank you to all of us for joining us tonight. You know, every time we have teachers join us at award meetings, especially you four, I'm just, it renews my appreciation for the high quality of the teaching staff we hire, and of course, principals and administrators. Thanks to all of you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
All right, we'll turn to our next discussion item B2, out-of-school time programming overview. So yes, Ms. Paul is not going too far, but Tim Morder is joining her. I wasn't talking to you, Mr. Human. Welcome, everybody.
Good evening, everybody, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. We believe our out-of-school time program and initiatives are critical to our students' success, and though we have many opportunities available to our students, we wanted to focus tonight on just our two of them, our middle school flex program and our targeted services summer school program. And joining us tonight to provide more information on flex is Christina Anderson, our out-of-school time programs coordinator, and to offer a parent perspective, we have Lisa B. Croft here, whose daughter Brooke attended our flex program. And then to speak to the targeted services summer school, we have Hugo Elementary Principal Jason Healy and parent Christina Hayden, and I didn't catch your name.
Devin.
Devin, and Devin. And then we provided you information in the packet prior to tonight to provide more information around these opportunities that are designed to meet the needs of our students, and now I invite you just to listen to our panel here, and we'll have time for questions at the end.
So I'll get us started, like Tim had mentioned, we did provide some information previously to you all. Our flex program is our middle school, out-of-school time program that actually specifically had been running in summers only. The program is specifically designed to be developmentally appropriate for middle schoolers, which, as you all know, can be a really great time in your youth, it can be a very challenging time in your youth, in terms of growing up, that transition from elementary school where you're kind of forced into doing things that your parents tell you, and then slowly but surely, having more leadership opportunities and more responsibility. Our summer program has been extremely successful, it's all been based around relationships, because also, we all know the importance of relationships with our students, as well as with their families. Our staff and students work closely to design program opportunities that would be interesting to middle schoolers. The program is meant to be interest-based, so we have students join committees that they're interested in the topics, they design the summer program, all based on those interests, they work through the entire process that a typical committee that one of us might be on, choosing a leader, having a note taker, going through the actual work process. Our field trip committee is just an example, that students manage a budget, I give them a budget for the field, for what they can spend over the summer, they book buses, they call and reserve their field trip spaces, they do the entire process. And the idea, again, is just to give them those leadership opportunities, ensure that they're interested in what we actually have planned for the summer, and keep them coming back, because no parent wants to fight with their child every morning to get them to go to summer camp or summer programming. We, this year grew, I feel like it was by thirty-five to forty percent, and then decided that we would expand our summer program to the school year. In the past, we've run the program here at Central, and then starting this fall, we will run a school year program at both of our middle schools, really designed to provide some comprehensive and quality out-of-school time programming that will span rec and enrichment, a hangout space that's safe, and academic support for our students as well. And then Lisa can share the perspective as a mom.
My daughter loves flex, and I don't say that easily, when you mention, you know, kids sometimes have to fight to go to their summer activities. Before the flex program, my kids were involved at the YMCA, and they were, it's a great program, I'm not knocking it at all, but when she heard about this opportunity, she was really ready to abandon that, she felt that she had, I don't know, she didn't have a lot of control over it, she also felt like she was getting too old for it, but at eleven years old, you're really not old enough, in my opinion, to stay home all day alone all summer. My husband and I both work in Minneapolis, and even with a staggered day where I go in at five, six in the morning, and he stays till six, seven at night, it's still, we don't like leaving the kids home alone for too long. So with the flex program, she's now been in it for two years, and it has been fantastic for her. As one of her former teachers would actually know, Brooke suffers with a little bit of anxiety, and so finding the right fit for her is critical, and I've been very fortunate in that Matoska Central and all the schools have really helped accommodate her needs and help her be a successful student at the schools. The flex program did the same thing, she felt part of a group, she felt part of a community, and it really was, my wording was, perfect bridge between kid care and staying home alone. I mean, it really is a place where she can go, she's empowered decisions, she's been on the field trip committee and the coffee shop committee, and was so proud of her work there, she's already planning next year, if there is a next year, she's already planning next year to be on the snack committee. So she's, she's got it figured out, she's already knows she's going next year, and we haven't even finished this summer.
So these kids are making coffee?
Actually, I think they're making it for the teachers. And then they took that money and they spent it towards different things, or they donated it, and, you know, she, it was really clever. She's developed responsibility and confidence through this program. Because we are kind of chaotic in the morning, trying to get two kids out the door, she rides her bike to flex in the morning, she rides it home in the afternoon, she's responsible, she gets herself out the door, she leaves on her own, gets home about twenty, thirty minutes before I do, and, you know, starts putting the dishes away. So it's really helped her have a little bit of responsibility in her schedule. In addition to that, again, the committees, I know that she's really proud of the work that she has done. But it's also fun, she talks about that she might be in the art room one day, or she's in the kitchen one day, and she has a little bit of screen time, but not too much screen time, because let's face it, if she was home alone, there'd be a lot more screen time. And finally, the staff have been wonderful, and, you know, if you can get a kid to go willingly to school and not have any complaints, you know, you've done something right. And my son is already looking for, she has bragged it up so much, he's like, Mom, I want to go to flex next year, I don't even know if he can yet, but if he doesn't, when he's age-appropriate, he will get his chance, so that's my thought.
And then summer school programming is very similar, because some of the kids that go to summer school program are part of the flex. So, you know, I just want to thank Christina and Tim for this leadership you're offering, because we also have field trips and things like that, and we have to make sure that they work together with our flex, with our extended date, there's the playground programs, all these wraparound programs that we work with every day in summer school, so, so thank you. And I know you have the bullet points of all the things about summer school and why we're able to offer such a wonderful summer school program, so I'm not going to get into that, but I will do a lot of thank yous, I'll thank Abby Case and Amber Pallone for their leadership as the site leaders, and then Tim for coming around every now and then with myself to make sure, plus Mike Torito and Julie Dwyer, setting up bus schedules. Summer school starts the week after the school year ends, so these bus drivers, they have all new routes to figure out in like a day, okay? All these teachers, they have new kids within that next day. The schools are brand-new for these kids. It's quite a process, I've been fortunate enough to be a part of it for the past four years, it's been great, and you know what? What's really awesome is when you have the staff outside, teachers outside, myself, others, and these kids are coming off the buses, and they are smiling from ear to ear, because they're super excited to be going to summer school, which is the week after the school year ends, which, it's pretty awesome. Christina came up to me one day, I don't know, was it when the busing was coming? And she just, she came on me, she said this, the greatest, nicest thing, and so when I was asked to, last week when I was asked, hey, come to the school board and make a presentation about, about summer programming, can you bring a parent? I'm like, I have one that, not only she's a parent, she's a teacher in the district, but, yeah, I thought it was pretty impactful, so if you want to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Jason. Well, this is Devin, as you heard, Deb, what grade are you going into today? She's going into third grade, and she's done summer school for the last three summers. It's fun for me, because like Jason said, I'm a first-grade teacher at Matoska Elementary, and what was really neat is, for the last, the month before school was over, I got to see the teachers in my building who were going to be teaching summer school, you know, finishing up the year, but also, you know, in an excited way, start to plan for summer school. The communication that I received as a teacher, or excuse me, as a parent, where my parent had, early on for summer school was really amazing, I knew exactly what the dates were, I knew, or what Devin, her teacher emailed me right away, earlier than, before the school year even ended, so I was really impressed with the communication. And Deb, last year, she had her same teacher that she had during the school year, so it was a fantastic role in the summer, she grew so much. This year, she had a different teacher, so she was a little bit nervous going in, but I get to see on the inside, for being a teacher, I always get to see the inside scoop. This was an opportunity for me to not have any impact on the planning, on anything like that, and just really get to wear my teacher hat. So the first day when Devin came back, and she cannot wait to go back to summer school the next day, I just knew this was going to be an awesome setup and an awesome programming, and she's, even the years past, she, she liked summer school, but this year in particular, the setup this year that you guys had, and I love it, because you guys are so reflective, every year you're trying new things and getting impact from parents, and like Jason said, I was so impressed, I drove up the first day, and the teachers outside, there were so many teachers outside, every day Jason's on the corner, welcoming the bus, the kids off the bus, even when it was raining out there with your umbrella, and the smiles and the excitement from all the teachers welcoming the kids in, it was just such a just such a fun, exciting place to be. And Devin was so excited, she wanted me to show, wanted to show me her room, wanted me to show her, 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 her teacher. And Ms. Jorgensen, she, Ms. Sam Jorgensen, she, I think this is her second year teaching. Absolutely fantastic. Devin just really bonded with her, loved her to death. She loved the, her classmates she sent. Is there anything else you want to say before Mom says it all about what you love about what's her? She loved the setup. One thing she mentioned is that during the school year, as we, it's kind of repetitive, we see a lot of the same things over and over with Daily Five and whatnot, not that that's good or bad, but she loved that summer school had a different setup for her. It was different than during the school year. She was learning new things, different things, continuing with the repetitive. But more, for me as a parent, it's not even so much about what she's learning, it's how she feels about her learning. It's how she, the process of her learning. It's not necessarily, you know, from point A to point B that she's learning all her words, it's how she feels about learning her words. So when she goes into third grade, she is so confident and is so excited. And on the way here, I said, "Are you ready for third grade?" And she's so confident and so ready for third grade. And that's what her teacher asked me, "What do you really want as a goal for Devin?" And I said, "It's the confidence, especially, you know, with the math focus, it's that confidence." And she knew that, and, you know, she would report back to me and talk to me about her confidence and whatnot. So we had touchboys on base times as well. And the field trips were really neat, too. We had four field trips that we got to go on, and I got to go on one as a, as a parent, as a parent this time, not just a teacher, and so that was really neat, too. I am just really impressed with the continual reflection and setup and the excitement of the teachers that, that I see at summer school. So these teachers, you would not have known that they've been teaching all year, they still have all this energy and excitement for, for summer, so that's really neat for me to see, too. So, thank you for letting me come speak.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything else about summer school?
Can I ask everyone a question?
Of course, Devin just mentioned.
What was your favorite field trip this summer? Where did you go? What did you do?
Uh, I don't really know.
What was the one that your mom came with you on? Where did you go? Where did your mom come?
The watching one? We didn't do the watching one, we went down to the sculpture. The Sculpture Garden?
Ooh.
When?
You saw that big cherry and that big spoon? Did you see that?
No, it was the Franconia Sculpture.
Oh, the Franconia.
Yeah. We could have spent so much more time out there. It was really fun. It was neat, too, just want to go back and whatnot.
Oh.
Yeah. Remember that one? Thank you for asking that.
Any other questions? Yeah.
Yeah, Jason, really. I, I saw the description of Flex, I had a, a panel on that, targeted services, I pretty much already knew what that was about. But with the summer school curriculum, you mentioned bullet points, but I didn't really see any in our pages here that we have for the board packet. What, was that individually tailored to the students or one in summer school?
Yeah, one of the, the parent feedback, each year we try to enhance it to make it better, better. She talked about the Franconia. Oh, we could have been there so much longer. Last year, the kids were there for, I mean, the summer, when we had summer school last year, our field trip days were eight to four, okay? And so that was, wow, that was a lot of time. So we thought, you know, one thing that, from looking at the survey from parents, one, and from teachers, and from just talking to students, they were exhausted on those field trip days. So how do we, how do we still offer these enriching experiences, but then shorten that day to meet that? So we were able to keep, and it helped out our extended, our community ed programming, too. If we can have a consistent start and end time every day, even when there's a field trip. So that would be one of the things that I thought that was.
Was there anything done in particular on the enhanced side of things?
Yeah, one of the enhancements this year, last year, we went down by the airport for one of our field trips to do water samples and canoeing and things like that, and we thought this year, thanks to John Leininger, who was, who was part of the planning process, too, why not, why don't we do this right here in our local lakes, either White Bear or Bald Eagle? So the kids in certain grade levels, they got, they got to go to Bald Eagle Lake and then do water samples and, and look at the organisms from there, a local, local lake. And, you know, with our lakes, the way they've been the past few years, it's caught quite interest for families and for students as well.
And the field trips were tailored for different grade levels as well, which was neat. Not all the kids went on the same field trips, so depending on age level, too.
Mm-hmm. Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Chapman.
The Flex program, all of the staff, is it existing White Bear staff, or do we go outside at all for staffing some of those positions during the summer months?
Uh, for our Flex program this year, I don't think we hired any new staff. We did last summer, and they returned to us this summer. It's, I, I mean, those relationships are just critical in making sure that you have the right type of staff person, too. So I don't believe we hired anyone new for, for that program this year. We're fortunate, though, that we do tend to have returners. We have a couple of students that are in grad school, and so then they're, you know, they're in school during their school year, and during the summer, they work with us. We also take staff from other programs in the community ed department and shift them to the middle school because that, that's their, I mean, they're skilled at working with that age group.
I assume that the opportunities to work on this program are, are held out or put out to the existing staff before we go outside? I mean, it's well-publicized.
Yeah, absolutely.
And just figuring out that with summer. We've had years in the past, we couldn't find enough internal candidates to teach summer school. The last couple of years, we've been able to find candidates because the, the program is just getting that much better.
I think that, as a parent, too, knowing that you had to interview candidates to teach for summer school, and not everyone was selected, not because of, just, but, but it's, it, it just showed me that it's, who is teaching our kids for the specific reasons for summer school was, you know, really highly sought out as well, so that was encouraging.
Any other questions?
Yes.
So just in closing, I just wanted to, there's a lot of modest people sitting up here, but I just think it's really important to acknowledge kind of where we were to where we are now. An extended date, it's, it's, it's fee-based, and, and then in targeted services, it's really based on having a need, an academic need. And, and Tim has just come in with a ton of energy around looking at all the opportunities of out-of-school time, and just how do we maximize all those opportunities to benefit our students. Christina really is, has always been opportunistic about how do we actually braid these opportunities together so that we actually aren't siloing everything, but we're just really creating the energy to bring, bring these parts together. In, in kind of tangent to this, targeted services is very compliance-focused. And so in a lot of programs, you'll see compliance being the driver and not much room to being able to look at the feedback and being responsive, like you heard. Jason has just been, just a tremendous leader in, in really looking at the continuous learning plan that you design the program around for students, and really putting the structures in place so that we have confidence in meeting our compliance expectations and creating a program that is very innovative. What we're doing is very innovative and different from what the approach other people take, and it's created now the opportunity for these folks to kind of take this, under this umbrella of out-of-school time, and really continue to accelerate and do, you know, take advantage of all of the feedback and the thinking that people are investing into it. And it was a big focus and energy and time commitment from the folks sitting here, and they're very modest about that, but, but it's really put us in a good position so that when we talk about these field trips and things, we're doing that with confidence that we are meeting all of our compliance expectations. And bottom line, we're having confident kids going into the next school year, just excited about school and about, you know, about what's in store for them. Your smile makes all the difference. And we're just so glad that you're here, and just, just wanted to make sure to share that with you.
And she, and she's gone every year, and this year has grown leaps and bounds from her first year, she did not want to go back, and it was just the idea of, kind of, it was the same thing over and over. And we know as educators that we need to do it differently, you, for these, for a lot of the kids that are in summer school, that we need to approach them different, in different type of learning. And this year was a beautiful setup for her. And one, last thing I want to say, too, is that they take a pre-assessment and a post-assessment to, to kind of compare their learning. And as teachers, we're asked, a lot of input on the students that we know are going into summer school, what as a teacher do you want to see their goals? Where are they at now, and where do you want to see them going? And Jason's really good about getting that data before we even send our students to summer school, so I knew that's what she was having as well. But her, she came home one day, and she said, "We took, we took a pre, a pre-test, but I'm not supposed to know all this stuff yet, so it's really fun to just, to just show what I know." She was so positive about this pre-test, that her teacher had prefaced it in such a way that it wasn't like, you, look at how much you don't know. It wasn't a stress by any means, it was an excitement for, "I'm not supposed to know this, and by the end, look at how much I am going to know." And I knew right there and then there that she had a great teacher to be able to preface it in that way, that there was no stress involved, there was only excitement for learning. And so that data collection is something that is also that academic component that's built in as well. So we have excited students, and we also have that data collection that is, you know, is as important as well. So putting the, to be able to do both in one, in one program is not always the easiest, and so compliments to, to this program as well. And I have a student that's going into, sorry, I'm in sixth grade next year, and I'm so excited for the Flex program for him because transitions are hard for him, and I'm so excited for him to see opportunities and what, kind of what the middle school program's going to look like as well. So these are just.
I'll show you pictures of Brooke.
Yeah.
She hasn't seen Brooke in years.
Yeah, I know. Excited.
She was, she was a very nervous kid.
Yeah.
And she's really grown into herself, so.
Well, thank you to all of you for being here tonight, especially Ms. Zee Croft and Ms. Hayden. And Devin, you have a great third-grade year, okay? All right, thanks. All right, we'll turn to our next discussion item, B. Green, that's an overview of the strategic planning development process. So that'll be Dr. Kazmarchek and Ange Nelson.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Adam, here, and to the board.
So the purpose of this agenda item this evening is to keep the board apprised of what's coming with the strategic planning process. I'll, I'll speak briefly about that, and then I'll ask Ange to maybe walk through the, the presentation and, and the napkin explanation, if you got to that, and we're wondering what that was. So that'll be, that's, that'll be the suspense that'll build towards something really, really exciting. So, again, this is, the, the purpose of this, and we'll have, we'll have frequent updates with the school board to let you know how things are progressing with the strategic planning process. Ange will go into some specifics, but I wanted to mention that we'll be getting underway with our planning team in September, so we're working on identifying who will be on that team. We're pretty close to having reached out to most of the planning team members, just a few more. I will hopefully finish reaching out tomorrow. And so that work will go on September eighteen, nineteen, twenty. You all have, board members, you have a, a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, the nineteenth, and I suppose we probably need to take action on that at September eleventh for a special meeting. Yeah, and, and actually, as an aside, the levy, preliminary levy also, we need to set that meeting as well. So we'll do, we'll have two special meetings in September. One will be September nineteenth for Dr. Cook, Dr. Cook to come and talk to you all about the strategic planning process, and then the preliminary levy, our annual levy approval, there's a step in the process that needs to occur by the end of the month, so that'll be, that'll coincide with our work study for that month. So, so be aware of those two special meetings in September. So with that, Ange Nelson is our, she's been designated as our internal facilitator for this process. It's an important role. Several of us have gone through the internal facilitator training, and several of us around the table here have done that, including a couple of board members. But Ange is the one who is working, she's the link between the school district and Cambrian Group, so Dr. Dr. Cook, who will be leading the session. So he and his staff, Ange has been the conduit between our organization and theirs. So Ange, if you would, go ahead and take over?
Sure, sure. So Ange Nelson, I think I've met most of you, but I associate principal at North Campus. Excited to be doing this work with Dr. Kazmarchek here. Really what the presentation is, is just a timeline of events, just to outline what's happening, because really, most of the information will come from Dr. Cook when you meet with him in a very short amount of time. But in July, we had internal facilitator training, and Wayne actually alluded to that, but Ellen and Marge were part of that training, as well as myself and Tim and Tim Shakenmeyer.
And Marissa has gone through it, Sarah has gone through it, anyone else gone through the internal facilitator training? So we, we have quite a few people who've done that initial training with, with, with Dr. Cook.
And that was a pretty intense three days, where we really dove into what strategic thinking was, before we even got into what a process might look like and what that really would mean for our district moving forward. Um, sure, I can just sort of think. So then in August, we did an awareness session, we, when leadership came together, and it really was just this presentation, just to give a broad overview of what's to come with this strategic plan, and all the different opportunities that there will be for people to participate as part of that process, even if you're not part of the initial planning team. Then today, yeah, that was today, huh? Convocation. Wow. Um, yeah, this morning, Wayne did another broad overview, just to give people, you know, the, the thirty thousand level view of what the strategic planning process would look like, with more information to come. And then Wade, you talked a little bit about the planning team, which will be, I think, about thirty people, twenty-five to thirty people that'll be invited to be part of that initial intense process. The planning team really is the team that dives in with Dr. Cook to look at beliefs and strategies, when we look at what that may look like for our district. From there, that's when action teams are formed, that would develop plans to support the strategies. So then in September, we have the planning team, it's an intense three days that will be meeting, and then Dr. Cook will be meeting with you all on September nineteenth. Once that's done, there will need to be awareness sessions at each of the district buildings to, to broaden everyone's knowledge about what this is all about, but also to get participation because that's when the action teams are formed, and we're going to need probably upwards of a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty people total to be part of this process because you, you, Dr. Cook feels strongly that you do not have less than fifteen people on an action team, and so we want to be able to recruit as many people as possible that represent all of our stakeholder groups to be part of that process. The action teams then will meet over the course of around three months. That is a schedule that we can set up at a later time, but looking at probably bi-weekly meetings, where they'll look at developing their action plans. Action teams will be led by action team leaders, and they'll receive training on that as well. Once that is set, the action team leaders brings their plans back to the original planning team to review, and then the original plan, planning team will analyze that, make any suggestions that they might have, and then come up with a final draft for the strategic plan that will come to you all in March for approval. And then it would be implemented next year. Is there any questions on just the timeline before we get to the explanation portion?
Let's talk napkin.
All right, napkin. Napkin explanation. So the, the point of the napkin explanation is really if you're having coffee with somebody and someone's like, "What is that strategic plan thing?", that you would be able to very quickly explain to somebody what a strategic plan is and what the process might mean for a district. And so really, when you look at these three questions, what do we want to be at some point in the future? Where are we now? And where would we be if we didn't interrupt what we're doing? And that would be these three points. So way out in the future up there is where we want to be, and it's really meant to be out there, something that you're going to be reaching for, and not something that would be easily obtained, attained in a, in a short amount of time. You are here, and if you didn't change anything, you would just stay flat, right? That space in between would be then the strategic gap, and that's where the strategic plan would come in with action steps and strategies. And then when you notice the orange arrows on the bottom, that would be strategic abandonment, which would be anything that doesn't fit into the strategic plan. Got that? Yeah. That's napkin. That's napkin.
You can sketch that out.
Yeah.
Any questions about?
So again, it'll be a frequent agenda item as we go forward here this year. We'll provide updates either in work study or, or in the regular meeting, so.
Yep, Kim?
How do you envision the teams, the action team membership, those teams being comprised, or who's going to sit on the individuals selected? or, or who's gonna sit on the individuals selected? Um, just curious, are you gonna go out to the community at large or, or in general, or do you, are you gonna leave it up to certain leaders, the action team leaders, to reach out to people? I'm curious what, what your thoughts are in terms of how those individuals are gonna be selected.
Yeah.
You wanna start?
Yeah, I'll start.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, when you go around to the school for the awareness session, that'll hit a lot of the, um, in district, but there's gonna be a lot of information going out to the public at the same exact time regarding the levy information, and so we're really hoping to visit many different areas, presenting both the levy information and the strategic plan information. Um, people can volunteer then for what action team they might be interested in because at that point, we'll know what the strategies are. Um, so we'll, we'll align with what they're interested in pursuing. Um, and then from there, that's when action leaders can be, um, can be recognized. Mm-hmm.
So several of the people who are involved in that initial planning team will move into action planning teams. They won't lead action teams, but they'll be part of action teams. Um, you know, a broad statement like today, there'll be an opportunity to get involved if you, if you so wish. Um, I've already gotten some emails from, from folks who want to get involved in that, in that step of the process. Um, so we're soliciting, I mean, if people want to get involved, we'll get them involved. So, um, at some point, we might have to reach out if we're not, if we're, if our teams aren't quite large enough, we may have to reach out, but we're trying to cast a wide net and bring people in if they're interested in being part of it, so.
Just so I'm clear on this, in terms of the membership, then it's going to be coming more from within the district? Your last comment there, Wayne, I wasn't sure what...
There'll be a lot of history folks, yeah. Right now, like, for example, our strategic planning team, it's, um, I don't know exactly fifty-fifty. It's about fifty percent internal, fifty percent external. I, I don't know if we'll achieve that same mix on the action, uh, action teams, but there'll certainly be a mix of internal and external. Might be a little bit more difficult when we're talking about a hundred and fifty people versus thirty people to come up with that mix, but that, that's our target, yeah.
George?
Um, we, we had, I can't, what, what year did it start? The previous strategic plan.
Twenty-ten, eleven is when it, when it was put in.
And it, you know, so that was a strategic plan, and it went, it was a process, and I think that, uh, there, some might have an argument that there might have, might have been too much taken on. So decisions had to be made along the way about which things to keep up, focus on, and so on. I think a lot of the good things came of it. Um, but I don't recall that, I guess a couple of things. Uh, some sort of culmination of it, you know, I don't know that I felt like we ever looked and said, we wanted to do this, we got this. And I know we've got updates along the way and stuff, but it's, so I just, just throwing that out there. Might be kinda neat to see. But then the other, it would, you know, is how will that interface with this, or will it be considered? Or will it be looked at as part of the overall strategy or something?
You mean the older?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, um, your first question.
There are some things that we'll do differently this time. Um, so when we get, we get a plan that's presented to the board in March for your consideration, for, for approval, um, there'll be steps that'll be taken then that we didn't necessarily take last time. So there's a, there's a step, for example, that's called mutual commitments, and that's actually when we bring in, that, that's when it's an in, internal staff who are gonna actually execute the plan. We start bringing folks in to figure out how we're gonna, how we're gonna move ahead, and we prioritize. This is likely going to be a, a five-year plan, so we have to priority, prioritize year by year what, what the focus will be. So that's a step in the process that we didn't go through previously. Um, there's also, um, there's some built-in accountability. We're actually checking out some software that Cambrian Group uses to, to maintain, um, accurate records of, of what we're doing. So I, I, I think we're going to do a, a good job of what you're asking about, uh, about that accountability as we go forward, so we can go back and check to see that we're, we're doing what the plan said we would do. Um, in fact, I view, I view that as an important part of my role in this, is, is to make sure that that's happening. So there would be, there would be regular updates with the board going forward. Um, but those are a couple of things that would be done that were, were, would be a little bit different than the past, yeah.
Dr. Cook, when he's here.
It's gonna be great because you can ask all kinds of questions, and I know we had a couple board members who were at, um, at that session, and I, I, I think you were favorably impressed with, uh, with Dr. Cook and the process he laid out, so.
March, head or hand up first, and we'll go to you, Ellen.
Okay.
Just in regard to Georgia's question, I think, and the experience that I think Ellen and I both had for three days was really intense with, with Dr. Cook, and it was a total, it was, to me, it looked like it was gonna be a transparent group effort, and you really learned the vocabulary of what was a strategic, an actual strategic thinking and strategic plan. And I think sometimes in the past, it got mixed in with other curricular terminology and it was, it was a more of a mix of different things where, to me, this looked like a very clear way of thinking and what you kept in this plan. And I'm not sure, maybe your action teams get down to the minutia, but there was a, a much, I felt like there was a much broader solid frame that started, and it was in, the idea was there were in, there was input from the whole community, which I think was unique to this plan at this point. And that was kind of my question when we were hearing about the earlier plans with the collaborative teams, that there's a big effort and time there, and this strategic plan is also something that's gonna pay off in the long run, and it's a big thinking effort. Both of them have lots of payoffs, but they're both major impacts and efforts.
Ellen? And then I know when the training in July and the beginning of August, Dr. Cook had recommended that, that planning team meeting over September eighteenth, twentieth. He had said some board members should be involved, and I had said at that stage, I think it should be a full board discussion because we're the, we're the final approval body, so I wasn't quite sure how that worked. But I don't know, it has, have you had any discussion with Dr. Cook about that, or?
About, about what specifically?
Remember when the, the groups that meet September eighteenth, twentieth, he was saying that there should be board members...
There should be...
Involved in that?
A board member or two involved in that.
Involved in that. Um, and I had brought up at that training that I, because we're the final approval body, I wasn't quite sure how that worked. Um, but has any decision been made on that?
Well, we have, I've been operating under the assumption that we would have board involvement on the, on the planning team, yeah. Um, and then, um, you know, I could certainly revisit with Dr. Cook, but I believe that's where he was at as well. He, he was pretty...
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Um, oh, in terms of the board discussion, we've not had a board discussion about whether or not board members should be on it, but, um, the recommendation from Dr. Cook is that you do have board member involvement. That would be unusual to not, so.
Any other questions? All right. Ange, big thank you to you for taking on this, uh, this additional role. I know it's given me a lot of work, and thank you to Ellen and Marge on behalf of the board for, uh, for serving as well. Thank you. And now our next item, B four, is, and I think Dr. Kazmicek may stay right there, is...
Stay here.
Yeah, local operating levy renewal information update.
If you were at Convocation, you heard some of this today, and I, I wanted to use this as an opportunity to, to talk about the presentation that we, um, we've been making, and we mean, uh, Mr. Wald and I, we've, uh, we've made this. I've, I've made it a, a few times on my own, but we wanted to give you an opportunity to, to hear it and to ask questions about it, and you heard a lot of it today, if you were there. So, thank you.
Sorry, thank you. I saw that it matches the audio.
So, um, and I won't, I won't necessarily go through it, um, exactly like we would with the, with a group, but I wanted to make sure you saw the content of the, of the presentation. So, so we've talked about, um, we talked about our, um, strong schools, uh, strong, strong community, strong tomorrows. Again, you heard about that today a fair amount. We, we talked about who we are and that we represent, um, ten municipalities, we identify where our schools are, um, our district bound, we show a district map. We, we've also talked a fair amount about our, our enrollment, and this has been a great opportunity to talk about the, uh, the demographers' work. So when we, we talk about who we are, um, we can point to our enrollment last year, and, um, the data over on the left, uh, I won't go through it all, but, uh, and then we, we focus most of our time on the projections over on the right. So our projections are that in, within five years, we'll be up, up close to nine thousand students, and then in ten years, it would be close to that ninety-five hundred mark. And the, the part that I, I think we all should be, um, we should all be aware of is those data include, um, housing starts that were approved or housing projects that were approved back in March. So we think that those figures might actually end up proving to be lower than what we'll actually experience. So, so we talk about that, and, um, if anyone that, you know, in these groups, uh, people who've been around and who've been paying attention, see what's happening throughout the district with the growth in the north and, and the turnover that's occurring in, in different parts of the district. So, um, this is a great talking point. It's a great opportunity for us to talk about good things that are happening in the district. And we do have a professional's opinion about where we think we're headed, and, um, this does generate a, a fair amount of, of good discussion. So who we are, uh, we are a growing school district, and that, that's a great, uh, that's a great thing to be right now because we've, we've come out of a long period of decline. We leveled off, and now we're, we're back, um, back growing. And, uh, on September eleventh, when we have our opening school report, uh, Mr. Wald will report on our opening enrollment, and things are looking pretty good here over the summer. Um, we're still processing withdrawals as much as, as those who are coming in, but it looks like we might be a little bit higher than what we had anticipated. So, um, hopefully that remains the case as we get closer to opening of school. Believe it or not, we still have a lot of in and out. Even this, this week, before the school year begins, we have a lot of families showing up, um, now, and sometimes you see family showing up in, on the first, uh, couple days of school enrolling. So, once the dust settles, by, um, by the end of that first week, we have a pretty good idea where we're at for opening enrollment. Again, stop me along the way here if you have questions, otherwise I'll just roll through. Um, we talked about, uh, this a little bit today, but we highlight, highlight this because we are, we are changing. Our demographics are changing, just like the state of Minnesota. Uh, we are experiencing some change. So nine years ago, um, the number of, uh, white students we have was eighty-four percent, and we're at nine, and we're at seventy-five percent now. And that's just an example of, of one of the demographic data that are different, uh, in the last decade. So we, we're highlighting the fact that we are, we are changing, and, um, and that's a good thing. I mean, we're, we're, uh, again, we're trying to explain who we are as a district with some of our more current data compared to where we've been, so.
We've got hands up all over. Uh, Mr. Wilson and Mr. Kimball.
Yeah, Wayne, on the free and reduced lunch, do you find that data skewed? Specifically, what is Sunrise's free and reduced lunch rate and Wolves? And if, if you can't answer that now, that's fine, but I'm thinking they're significantly higher than...
That's our district average. Yeah, we have schools that are much higher than district average, absolutely. We have, uh, you know, we have an elementary school that'd be in the, you know, top of my head, twelve to fifteen percent compared to one that's closer to sixty percent. We have that big of a range from one school to the next, yeah. And Sunrise is, is very different compared to Central, absolutely, yeah. District average is twenty-eight. And that's, uh, actually, and maybe somebody can correct me, those of you who've been around a little bit longer, but I, I think that, that has actually stayed relatively consistent, um, within a couple of percents up, up or down. Uh, maybe we're up over thirty at some point, but, um...
Yeah, I just, when I, you know, this is used a lot, right? This, but when I, when I see this, I just have a disconnect looking at this slide because first time I looked, I didn't, I mean, I didn't think we were comparing ten years ago to now because I had trouble with the figure over here. I'm wondering why, why it isn't just more alike to a simple mine like mine, that here's two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and here's two thousand sixteen to seventeen. Otherwise, I'm going over here saying, oh, white is eighty-three point seven. Wait, over here, it says it's seventy-five. Then I'm not figuring out in my mind that it's two different times, you know? It's like apples to apples. Where, what's the point of the slide that we're changed a lot or something?
Yeah, they were changing.
But so then, I think we, I don't, I think...
Be more clear about that.
Yeah.
You don't wanna pie chart and a list.
No, and then some of the things on the right side aren't on the left side, and to have it two thousand eight, nine in this format instead of here. Just a...
Formatting changes recommended going forward.
That's it.
Appreciate that.
All right.
I would suspect the data was just divided up differently, and I think I've always been sensitive that, to that since my daughter is from Korea. And I was always sensitive to, is there another Asian child student in her school? It was, there were two, you know, uh, and it was the same family that we've, we've known. And now it's, it's grown, and I mean, it's great. But back then, I don't think we ever were as specific, you know? So even if we put that data in the pie chart, it might not divide up the same way.
Yeah.
Because I don't know that we gathered data the same way.
Right, we don't.
But...
But we can come up with a, we can come up with, but, yeah, we can come up with a different way to portray that, absolutely. Okay, we can keep going. So this, we, we, skip to forty-nine. Um, we talked about this today, or the, it was part of the presentation today. Um, six years ago, we had twenty-five different home languages. Last year, we were, we were up to almost fifty. I know there were, there've been different data points. Two years ago, I think we were at fifty-seven. I just, I think, uh, forty-nine is where we were last year. It just, uh, there, there might be, um, one or two families of, that speak a certain language, and then they might, they might leave the district, and so then that language would no longer be in the count. So we believe this is accurate as of last year. So this is a number that fluctuates, but the message is that we, um, not that long ago, we were at, uh, we're half of where we are right now in terms of home language is spoken, so. Oh, there it is. I just didn't click twice. How are our students doing? We, we talked, uh, we, we've talked about our MCA data. We don't, we don't dwell on that. We've talked about, um, our college and, or our, um, our credit bearing courses with our students taking that. We, we'd like to highlight that. That's a real, um, a positive move for us. Um, so we've, we've spent some time talking about that with our, with our groups. Um, graduation rate has been positive. Reminder to vote. Don't tell people how to vote, but to remind them of the, of the, the day. And this is a graphic that you'll, you'll see. We, this is a horrible, horrible slide, I know, but we, certain groups really want to know about the, um, some of the specifics. So for example, with the chamber, we were, we, uh, we actually handed out the, the printout of this, a double-sided document, and we, we, uh, we went through the circled items in particular about, about tax impact and, and revenue generated. And so some groups, um, want to know what that is. So our, you know, it's fifteen thirty-eight, difficult to read up in the upper left, but fifteen thirty-eight per pupil. And, um, we can explain how the, so the fourteen point two million that this generates is, is a function of that fifteen thirty-eight times the number of student, uh, the pupil units. And so we explain that. Um, and again, we can go as deep into the weeds with the numbers as, as a group might want to, and so we have this available in case a group wants to do that.
Do you add to the slide?
No, thank you. All right. So these are, um, those are the two numbers I just highlighted, and it, it shows how the, how the revenue is calculated. Uh, nineteen, uh, nineteen million, there, um, we try to avoid getting into this because then we start talking about local optional revenue and equity revenue and different things that kick in, but, but again, depending on the group, there might be questions about, um, what other types of revenue come along with an operating levy that gets approved because there are, there are different things that kick in as a result. Local optional revenue is something you'll, you'll hear about, you'll hear, you'll hear about it in September when we present the, the annual levy for, um, for your consideration, and you had the preliminary levy that we approve at the end of September. And then as we go, so there's the regular levy that we do every year, and then there's the operating levy. The operating levy is a handful of line items in a forty-page document that you, that we consider in, in September. So, again, we'll get into that over the course of the next month. Uh, and then tax impact. Again, we're careful to not tell this as a tax decrease. We, we just talked about the fact that we're asking for the same, uh, revenue that we, we have currently, and it just so happens that, um, in that initial year, there's a bit of a, uh, bit of a dip. So, but again, we're not, we're not... So, but again, we're not, we're not highlighting this as a tax decrease by any means. We're just, we're just saying that it's flat. And again, just a reminder, how this worked, remember the numbers now. That initial question, 69% of respondents to the survey said they supported renewal. With an informed, with an informed respondent, that rose to 75%. And then when the respondents understood that there was no tax increase, the support grew to 82%. So, it's an important message, obviously. And we highlight our double A bond rating. We're going to have an opportunity coming up. We'll, we'll be meeting with our financial advisors here shortly to, to go through this process again because we're going to do some refunding, some refinancing of some of our debt. That'll happen in the next couple of months. And then our, our financial reporting, we've been recognized for 17 consecutive years by these two different organizations.
I'm just really glad you chose to put this aspect in the levy referendum information package because to any rational-thinking person, this should placate them with the question of, you know, transparency and accountability. And when you have 17 years of external agencies giving you their sample approval and really providing them that way of funding, that's exceptional performance, you know? And I think that should lay anyone's fears, like I said, any rational-thinking person's fears about if we're handling the money well. I mean, because you look at 14.2 million, that's a lot, you know? But we're doing the right things with it.
Yeah, a lot of the transparency, this you're all aware and we could show you at some point, but you can find a lot of financial information on the district's website. You can see our budget. You can see our preliminary budget that gets approved mid-year. You can, or I mean, in June, you can see the budget update that gets approved for the last several years in mid-year. You can find our audit reports. You can find resources for folks to, if they really want to understand school finance, there's a lot of resources there.
So, the first one is on Mr. Wald and our new director of finance to make it 18 consecutive years.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
A lot of pressure. I don't know if Janet needs to recognize or if I can just.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Chair.
Just when I'm on the first bullet, so, I'm not seeing 16 and 17 up there.
Because we didn't go through a ratings call with Standard and Poor's. This is, this only happens when you issue bonds. Or, so we'll be issuing bonds again this fall to do a refinancing, to get a lower rate. So, we'll go through the S and P ratings process again and hopefully we'll end up with a double A bond rating. I suspect we will. I mean, knock on wood. And then we would add that, that as another year. So, these are the years that we went through the process and was affirmed, this double A rating.
I can see before asking that question, I don't.
How about awarded from Standard and Poor's and every year the district has applied since 2008. That might be true and a little more positive sounding, unless there is a year in there where we're not getting a double A.
Not that I'm aware of, no. Not since the last, let's see, the last two I've been part of, those are the only two we've done. So, it was affirmed. So, we'll look at this one, too.
Yeah, well, is it likely that we'll have the 2016 figure? Or would they call it 2017?
They'd call it 2017. Let me think of the timing.
Do you have that figure in enough time to include it, do you think?
Yeah, we might. We might. Like, for the last month of the, you know, for the month of October, we might, or after the, after the first board.
You know what? This is a work-study meeting. Let's be more informal. If Wayne sees you with your hand up, he can call on you, so.
Thank you.
Otherwise, everything is happening behind me.
So, to finish the thought, the, the ratings call would likely happen at the end of September, early October, leading up to that first board meeting in October when we would, we would make the sale of bonds, yeah.
I'm just thinking you're confusing the issue by putting all those years. The fact is, we have this rating now.
Yeah.
And that, to me, confuses it for someone reading this or, or presenting it. And if anything, I don't know if we're, if there's 10 out of all of the districts, if that number's impressive, that might be good to say there's only 12 of the 300 districts or something. But otherwise, it seems unnecessary to have these years in there. Because they represent bonds and no one's talking about that.
Years of issuance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. Did Janet not say, though, that we're looking at rewriting it just to say that for every year since 2008 that we've issued a bond, that we've received a double A rating? I think that would.
We'll work on that.
Yeah. I, I do think not skipping years saves a lot of, like, oh, is that negative? And Janet's suggestion was kind of a, a logical way of presenting the data without making people, people think about, well, what about the years in between? They don't need to think about that because it's not an issue, but you'd have to do a lot of splaining to have it clear.
Right. We're.
Splaining.
Okay, then, one of the things that, again, in the, in the survey, we learned is that, again, that initial support was 69%. And then when people understood what we had been spending revenue on, then the support grew. And the top three things that had that positive impact on people's thinking were the college credit bearing courses, our career pathway work, and then our supporting, well, the survey called it supporting struggling learners, but we've, we've broadened it to include broader definition than that. But it was basically support for students. So, those are the three things that we've highlighted as positive things that we've done with, with our revenue. And highlighted a few other things. And we do certainly have an impressive graduation rate. We're at a, right around 90%, which is, which is above the, the state average. One of the nice things about having Tim with on these presentations is that a lot of people like talking about career pathways work, for example, in the college, in the college and, or the credit bearing courses. And so, with Tim's background, it's, we get into some very deep conversations about that. So, that's actually been very helpful. And, you know, partnerships, we, we value partnerships and we like to highlight those with our, with our groups that we're meeting with. And this goes back to some of the earlier discussion. The, the survey showed, showed that, I mean, essentially, a district can be trusted to properly manage tax revenue. And that, that came out in the survey. So, we like to highlight that as well. And I've talked about that last bullet item a couple of times, so I'll move on. And then looking forward, this is where we talk about our strategic planning process. So, this is the hook to, to, to talk to groups about getting involved, if they would like to be involved. And again, depending on the group, we spend a fair amount of time on that or, or not, depending on where the conversation goes. And then that will lead into our comprehensive facilities planning work. And we, we reiterate the, the student growth at this point as well. Scott.
Just a small item for consideration. Continued growth projected in the coming years. Do we want to try to tie another hook into the levy that you could say throughout the college levy? Something like that?
Say that again? Throughout the, all throughout the?
Expecting continued growth throughout the period of the.
10 years?
Yeah. Well, there would be a line there. That would be accurate, yeah.
Just word it how you like it. Tie it back into the levy that, you know, throughout that whole 10-year period, we're expecting growth.
Yeah. Okay. So, that's the presentation. That's the brief version of it. And again, depending on the group, like, for example, some of our employee groups, we've gone through it relatively quickly. They, they're pretty well in the know about, about things. And we, we might actually spend more time talking about enrollment than, than the actual levy. And once they get their questions satisfied on the levy, we move into other topics. But tomorrow, for example, we're meeting with, actually, first student invited, Tim and I, over there, to meet with their bus driver. So, we're gonna, we're gonna welcome them back to the school year and also, we're gonna talk about this as well. Because a lot of, certainly those, those folks are impacted by this. And, I mean, they're driving our kids and they're my, you know, they, we want them to understand what's happening as well. So, so any opportunity, I don't know what we're up to, maybe 60 or so, maybe a little bit more than that, presentations. However brief or however lengthy they may be, that, that's where we're up, we're up to about that. We've met with legislators, several legislators already, been very positive.
And we all have the spreadsheet run around. I have to, Wayne, either Wayne or Tim, all these meetings. Hopefully, at a minimum, we could all make the PTO meetings at our liaison schools and hopefully the staff meetings as well. And then any of those community meetings, City White Bear, City Hugo, those, we just don't want more than three board members. We don't want to be having to post a meeting, so. But take a look at that spreadsheet if you have any opportunity to plug your name in to attend some of these, please do. Yeah.
Is Jody monitoring the number of board members that are saying they're going to show up to each of the meetings?
Yeah, just keep track of the schedule, yeah.
We can't have an illicit quorum show up.
No. No, she'll give somebody the hook.
Okay. That sheet still.
I think it's a Google Doc. I think it's available.
We could have a, we could have a resend it.
Yeah.
Oh, no. It's in Google Doc.
Yeah, it should be on there.
So, we can add to it ourselves?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't be nervous.
All right. Any other questions about this? This is our elevator speech for the community, too. So, we should all memorize it to have the PowerPoint available at all opportunities, so.
On your smartphone.
Yeah, a whole bunch of napkins.
Have me use it.
All right. Well, thank you. Well, I don't know if you wanted to come back here, stay up there, if you're not too comfortable up there. So, our next item is item B5, and that's elementary art discussion. So, we have Tim Wald and Sarah Paul and Dr. Kazmicek, you're involved in this as well.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mrs. Board. At our May work session, we had a fairly lengthy discussion about elementary art. And at that point, it's clear that there's, we need to look closely at what our plan for the future is. In the meantime, we continue to have a longstanding partnership with the White Bear Center for the Arts. And we look to have a more formalized written contract with the White Bear Center for the Arts. And so, that's been provided for you in your board packet to take a look at. And we'll refine that contract over the next week with the Center for the Arts. Want to make sure that our agreement with them is, I mean, in writing for the, for the 17, 18 school year. So, if you have questions regarding that contract or moving forward with that, we'll be coming to you a September 11th board meeting with a, you know, completed contract for you to take action on that, maybe.
There were some typos in it and whatnot, but I'm sure they'll be cleaned up before September 11th, so.
I'd like to register just a general protest of the timing of these contracts. I'd like to see them dealt within the spring, you know, April, May, so that if it is determined that we're going to terminate, one of the agreements are truncated to the point where FTEs would be generated, you would have some time to prepare for that, you know, resource it, you'd have the summer to hire, that sort of thing. And I would just recommend that we make that change. Also, I got a letter here from what I presume are a group of art teachers. And with the Center for the Arts program, they are saying two things that stood out to me. First of all, their preferred solution is reiteration of the elementary art program. They're saying that is the best solution to meeting the needs of our elementary art students. And that of the five districts that they investigated, inquired at surrounding White Bear, we were second lowest in the number of hours of elementary art education. To me, that really is screaming for, you know, art teachers coming back in the school. And they talked about meeting with the Center for the Arts three years ago. Well, I'm going to go back 20 years when, you know, the ghastly cuts were made, 97. You know, there's red ink, you know, staining the floors everywhere. And promises by past boards were made that when the time came, that we would restore the elementary art program. And I think that time is here now. And, you know, out of pragmatism, we'll approve this contract for the coming year, but I really would like to look hard at continuing both the McFale and the Center for the Arts contracts with enough time to actually do something constructive with them, other than approve them and, you know, just maintain what's been going on. That's it.
I think all the board members have relatively strong opinions on this. So, why don't we go around? Kim, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I was, coming out of the May meeting, I was thinking that we, the discussion had gone where we were going to get a cost benefit ratio or analysis done. Because I know the discussion, I mentioned it, that a number of our elementary schools are, have expressed concern of the fact that the PTOs, PTA's are spending considerable amounts of money to augment what the district is doing. And I, I, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought we were coming away from that meeting where that was going to be looked at more in a compilation, not only of what the district is spending for the art program, but also to show what the, what the individual elementary schools are spending in addition to what the district's spending. So, we get a better picture of what the total amount is that's going to, to the White Bear Center for the Arts. So, maybe I was, you know, like I say, wrong coming out of that meeting with that understanding. But I guess I, I would have liked to have seen something like this before we, we got to a point of, of a contract renewal.
Well, I, I think we will be doing that going forward, but school starts next week. And we're going to have, we couldn't right now decide, and, you know, I credit Scott for saying that we should have, you know, be looking at these contracts, we know those in the spring. But the fact is, if we're going to have art instruction of any way, shape or form in the elementary schools in this school year, we have to renew with Center for the Arts. It's for this year, it's the only option. But I think Dr. Kazmicek and I have talked about this at length. And I think the cabinet and Dr. Kazmicek are committed to a review of how we provide art instruction at the elementary level in particular over the next several months and then making a decision, should there be a change in how we do that for the 2018, 2019 school years? And keeping in mind that our partnership historically with the White Bear Center for the Arts has been valuable. And, you know, perhaps we should be moving towards using them more for providing enrichment opportunities for our students. And perhaps, as Scott suggested, using licensed White Bear Lake teachers to kind of reintegrate art specialists into the specialist rotation in the elementary schools. Did I state that fairly, Dr. Kazmicek?
Yeah, I think you did, yeah.
And to what degree?
How would that look? Right? Is it replicating our current services with a licensed teacher? Is it building in a, into the, into the rotation? Right? You know, maybe two FTEs to replicate what we're doing right now, about nine FTEs to build it into the rotation. And so, it's a significant investment. And so, with the strategic planning process that's unveiling right now, I think this decision might be really well informed by that strategic planning process.
Ellen. And, you know, one thing in reading the, the letter from the, the art department, one thing that really jumped out at me was the K5 visual arts standards that don't seem to be met because we don't have an art specialist coordinating the program. I know that we had been given information and there was a lot of confusion about, well, are they meeting social standards with the White Bear Center for the Arts? Can that be done? But what really jumped out at me is, and having taught science in middle school and knowing how important it is to have the elementary teaching the K5 science standards so we know where those kids are coming into, I mean, that really jumped out at me, that we're doing a disservice also to our art teachers in terms of, of not looking at those K5 visual arts standards that are there.
Yeah, Marge.
Well, I would agree with what Ellen said. And the other thing, I guess I'm looking at this from the perspective of someone that was here when those bloody cuts were on the floor and the promises were made. And I was a parent at that time, too, besides being an district employee. And we were all sad and there were White Bear. an executive employee, and we were all sad, and there were White Bear retired art teachers who kind of stormed to the breach and started cobbling together this temporary solution to continue providing our kids with the best we could. And it never was meant to last for decades. It was meant always, that promise was there. And, and I do think that the point of looking at this contract, I understand we're here because we're here, and this is where we need to be, but the concern is always that then next spring, we're here, and we're here because this is where we need to be. And somewhere, there needs to be a commitment that we may be here now, but we need to make some sort of a, a serious commitment that this is not where we need to be, and that we're gonna continue on and look at, I don't remember an art teacher for every school by any means when my kids were in elementary, so it may not be any, if you look at it historically. But they definitely had a rotation, and Roy Larson and, and Mr. Zeller and the others did their tour, Lori Quello, I'm trying to think, I've been around long enough, I remember the names, and my kids enjoyed them when they came. And they, I don't know whether they had two schools or three schools, but they were a part of the curriculum, everybody got the same thing, and it was a matter of equity, too, and, and a real quality standard that was set by what was in our plan. And it was our plan that fit our curriculum, state requirements, and whatever we were looking at, at the time back then. And I think we need to do that, because we're a quality school district, and I'm not saying what they're getting isn't great, I'm liaison to Otter, and Otter provides beyond always. They do an incredible job at that school, but other schools can't do that. And, and I think, you know, we just need to look at a lot of things, but we need to not let it just go another year and another year.
George?
Um, I'm, it sounds like we are going to do, we are, it sounds like there's a commitment to do a review of all of the information that we have on, on what FTEs would cost, what standards could be in place with the current setup, what can't be, what's not there, why isn't it there? So I think that's really good. I don't, you know, I'm hearing this, the talk of promises made, and I, I've been on the board 12 years, I've never heard a promise. So I, if, if someone promised something 20 years ago, that, that's null and void, that can't be carried over to...
I see it as a set of honor.
No one's, no one's here who was there at the time.
Oh, some of us are.
Yeah.
I think it'd be...
I'm saying that...
Better if we address the, either...
It hasn't happened here.
...planning process, because my sense is, there's a wellspring of parents out there and families that want more arts in the school, and if we're seeing that through the strategic planning process, you know, then that should really push us to perhaps change how we're, how we're addressing that in the elementary level.
I'm just saying we shouldn't have preconceived thoughts about what that should look like. We have to, we have to get all of the information and have, do what's best at the end for our district and for our students, and it, we don't know what that is yet, I don't think.
It might be helpful for us, like, we have a very well-defined timeline for strategic planning, maybe we should create a separate one for analysis of how we currently provide art instruction in the elementary schools, and options for changing that in the future, for, you know, looking for the data that Kim wants to see, and just looking at all the different options and impacts on the district. So that we'd be prepared to make a decision after George and I are gone, but early, early next year, so that if there are any changes, we can address it through any necessary hires that are needed.
Madam Chair, I appreciate the suggestion, and you guys are asking great questions. This is a very respectful communication from the art department teachers that are just passionate about what they teach and want us to be thoughtful about providing our students with those experiences. I'm just gonna bring you back to the napkin that was referenced, because part of a strategic planning process is that you bring in multiple perspectives, and then, in that process, when you add something, there is the process of strategic abandonment. And so, so this is part of that broader discussion, which is great timing for us, because then those perspectives will be shared, and then we will have, have our core design that's gonna come through pre-K through 12 programming, and then there will be some strategic abandonment when you look at, at what you're gonna add, and then some things are gonna have to come off, because when we try to be everything to everyone, there are enrichment opportunities. We heard from people tonight that out-of-school time is a great way to leverage some other opportunities, that we may have to reconsider how we're delivering other programming. So it's, it's webbed and connected to a lot of different factors that, again, great to be, and Tim referenced it, the great opportunity through the strategic planning process, but I think if we do create a separate timeline for art, I think we have to be careful about what we're saying we're open to through the strategic planning process, that this needs to be part of that discussion, with more data to support a response to some of the questions that you're asking. But I do think, and, and, you know, if you can get more perspective, but I do think it's important that we do look at that strategic planning process as the design for addressing this and many other questions and opportunities that we're gonna have surface, and make strategic decisions about what we're offering. So I, I wanted to say that because I don't want anybody leaving thinking that we're making a decision or that we're gonna come back with information in front of that strategic planning process. I have a lot of faith in Dr. Cook and, and the process that he's laid out, and I think we're gonna be, it'll take some discipline from us to kind of really be, be clear at following that process to land on what we're gonna design around for a system.
With the board, you know, the targeted approval date in March, that allows us time subsequent to that to, to make staffing decisions, so.
I think you can see from us, we will not be sitting here a year from now asking, having you ask these questions with no answers. That's a clear commitment, that's not gonna happen, because I think the way Dr. Kazmicek has mapped out kind of a strategic planning process and other decisions linked to that, and the timing of those decisions, I think we're, we're well positioned to be at a different place next year.
I think there's an ancillary issue to all this that never really struck me until Mick Walzberger, our outside counsel, addressed the board at work-study in May, and that is the effect of the availability of art opportunities in our elementary schools, depending on which PTO they have. We have some PTOs who raise boatloads of money and provide lots of additional ancillary art services through the White Bear Center for the Arts from the money they raise. We have other schools that aren't so wealthy, and, and their PTOs don't raise as much, so we, we get into this system where we have haves and have more schools. And Mick said, we shouldn't be doing it that way, we should be, all the PTOs should raise their money in a big bucket pool, and then it be, it should be distributed evenly among the schools, which would never fly in a million years, I mean, we'd have some of the PTOs screaming bloody murder, but, you know, that, it's a philosophical question that we may wanna, we may wanna think about, you know, how much do we allow the PTOs to kind of control the availability of these enrichment services where some of the schools, their PTOs just are not gonna be able to afford the same thing? Don, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure that my point on this was, was registered, and there's a lot of thoughtful comments, and I appreciate every one of them, and I agree with, with the majority of them. I, I think that, you know, I think that we should be using the White Bear Center for the Arts and it, for, for an enhancement piece, and we, teachers should be teaching art, and I agree with that statement, I think that we need to look at the way that the PTOs are raising money. I look forward to the information as it comes back, so.
And I think Mr. Chapman's point about cost analysis throughout the strategic planning process, I think the finance office is gonna be really busy costing out proposals by action teams.
That actually, you know, maybe addresses, George, you asked a couple of questions earlier, when we talked about strategic planning, that's also an additional piece of the planning process that will be, that will look different than it did in the past, there'll be specific budgets and target, targeted expenditures for, for all these various action planning groups that come up with ideas, so that, that'll be part of that process.
Ellen?
Can I just say a very brief, thank you for the comprehensive contract, because we have been asking to see the contract for the White Bear Center for the Arts, and what we got is a very comprehensive contract, so we've worked on that, thank you very much.
And the lawyers are just happy to see the liability issues addressed. Always wants the liability issues addressed.
It was, you know, there was a multitude of things addressed, when I went back and compared it with the original one, which was the one page, I mean, it, unless I'm missing things, but it addresses a multitude of things, so thank you for the work on that.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that we are working towards that. It isn't complete, and we have some details to work out with the Center for the Arts, but thank you for that comment, because we wanted, it's not complete, but we thought, well, at least you'll see that we're making progress, so. So it will be presented to you on September 11th in final form.
Okay. Kim, did you have something?
I just want to echo that, I appreciate the extra effort and the time put into developing that more comprehensive, better-looking contract.
Anything further? I appreciate everybody's consideration of this, and thank everybody for the work on it. All right, I see that our remaining agenda item is the negotiation study session to discuss our status of negotiation with our labor union, which would require us to go into closed session. Is there a motion to recess and go into closed? Five minutes, everybody, let's be up in room two.
Janet, you know that I will not be there.
Yes. Done, got it, yeah.